He was going there and he turned off the road street. He went straight off there. He made a rocky turn, headed back to him. And he was telling Alan that he was driving ninety-six miles at that.
It was worth it. I hope it was worth it. Really did. Crazy.
Do you remember what time Mr. Thompson next Sunday?
Alan, I uh, I almost texted you Saturday, but I was still recovering from my, from the NC State games.
Good thing you didn't. My wife had to leave and go take a walk.
Because you were so upset?
No, I wasn't. Unhappy. Put it that way.
App State in Carolina. Super high scoring. App State scored thirty-four points in the fourth quarter. Two touchdowns in the last minute of the game.
Oh my god.
Barely lost. This is, I just finished watching the NC State game, which was.
Where comes this?
Yeah, it was like sixty-four to sixty-five. It looked like basketball. State, State tried to do, State, they tried every single way to lose the game.
Okay, oh wow.
They tried their best to give the game away.
Oh my.
Coin drop. Went to coin drop.
The uh, hold on, this is.
We are ready. Okay. Good afternoon, here, I'll take this off. Uh, good afternoon, everyone. It's nice to see you. I hope you all had a safe and sound holiday weekend. And uh, we are assembled here today for the City of Oxford Board of Commissioners Agenda Meeting. Today is Tuesdays, September sixth, twenty twenty-two, and it is five thirty P M. And we are in the Commissioners Boardroom of City Hall. And our business today is to set the agenda for next Tuesday, September thirteenth, regular session. And so I don't forget, let's, we'll go through the whole agenda, but we have some add-on items for you to consider. And one of them is to consider accepting a certificate of sufficiency for petition of voluntary contiguous annexation on behalf of Susan Param Horton, John Horton Junior, and Kenneth Param for a property containing one point four two plus or minus acres located off of Lewis Street. Is this the same property Cindy, Mr. Thornton, that's related to the urgent care center? Okay. Uh, and the second item is to consider approving a new lease agreement between the City of Oxford and Bramble Communications, who has the building right outside of City Hall. Um, safe to assume that we will be forwarded all the appropriate court material for both of those? Okay, so with those two items, folks, do you have any questions? What's your interest as far as those two are concerned?
Motion?
Motion to add these to the agenda, any discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Those two items stand added to the agenda. So we move forward. And standard openings. And we'll get information about the yard of the month and under delegations. Um, looking forward to hearing from Amy Ratliff on infrastructure improvements. And finance discussion and crime report from our police chief. So any questions on any of those? Okay. Under public hearings, we have a public hearing to receive citizen input regarding the request from Rural Urgent Care, LLC of Birmingham, Alabama, for the property located at seven thirty-five Lewis Street. Uh, from um, changing it from industrial park to highway business. And any questions on that item? And then consider approving their request. And this item B, moving forward to item C, conducting the first of two public hearings to receive citizen comments about possible community development grant, block grant applications. And this is to hear uh, citizen input on the needs of low and moderate income residents in neighborhoods within the city. And that we're getting approximately forty-five million from HUD to be made available, not us, but the state, for local governments each year to serve low and moderate income people. And uh, so we will be hearing from the community on this. Does anybody have any questions on this item?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is this something that we get every year? I mean, is it something that we usually get or?
No, it's something that we have taken the uh, opportunity to seek essentially, completing application. Uh, Cheryl can tell you more, but we've applied for the last several years for that funding. Federal funding, very competitive, based upon your application and your needs specifically in the demographics that support it. That's basically the determining factor of whether or not you are offered the funding. Cheryl, you want to add anything to that?
Yes, um, so we applied a few years ago, I think it was in the first week here, two thousand eighteen. Um, that was when they opened it back up. Um, before then, they were opening up these grants more for infrastructure. They went more back to rehabilitation houses. So um, we um, we were successful with the seven hundred fifty thousand. Hopefully they'll close out soon. And this one, it reached up to nine hundred thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Gilry.
So is this just for rehabilitation, or could it be a way of negotiating uh, lower income type housing development?
No, this is strictly rehabilitation.
Okay. And Commissioner Conde, do you have a question?
Um, nope, the last two questions answered my question.
Okay, and so Ms. Hart, then you're going through your usual process of trying to identify properties that you think would be good candidates?
Actually, we have a list of houses um, that we pay off. So we set those in for the next, so the list.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item five, city business. A, consider calling for a public hearing in October to regard tax amendment to allow townhomes under the conservation development standards under chapter two point three in the U D O for G R five zoning classification. Uh, you have that support information is in your attachment five. And do any of you have any questions on this item at this time? I can get everybody just looking, so I'll give you a minute. And. This is related to the item that was on our agenda before and pulled. Um, at that time, a planning board recommended uh, sticking with townhomes in G R ten, which is the way it currently is in the U D O. And then um, we've had a little bit of conversation at the last planning board meeting. And everybody felt more comfortable with recommending it to also be included for G R five. Okay. Any questions? And I am realizing that I had a question on item four B, and this was for Ms. Hart. Just going back to the, when you, you included this great map for showing that property, but will you, is it possible to have the zoning labeled on the map? Because right now we have all these different colors, but we don't know, there's no legend. Thank you. Uh, okay, moving forward to item five P, consider adopting the four resolutions requesting state loans and grants for stormwater and drinking water. Four separate ones, one for Cherry and Goshen Stormwater Improvements. Another for King Crease Wet London Flood Management, another for citywide stormwater master plan study. And another for water system letting copper rule study and implementation. And um, I guess that's supposed to say Cherry Street. Um, does anybody have any questions on this item?
Is this the one that we're actually applying for a loan or something? A grant or something?
Well, we're applying for funding. The state will be determining whether or not it's a grant or to offer us a potential loan. Hopefully there'll be some grant funding involved because it's another round of the A R P funds that have come down from the feds to the state that are being used in these programs. So we are trying to avail ourselves to the opportunity to receive that funding. And they'll make that determination and then make us the offer of a grant or a grant loan combination or loan. If we're lucky.
So how does that relate to the amount that we have noted in stormwater management? Is that in addition to the five, five hundred and thirty-three thousand if we get that or?
What it would mean is basically, if, if we were to get a grant for, say, the Cherry and Broad Street Stormwater Project, it would mean that we would not have to spend the money out of our stormwater fund to do that project. That's basically what that would mean.
And the Cherry and Broad Street is addressing what issue?
Just stormwater. Stormwater and flooding in that area that occurs.
Is that Elmwood too?
Is that what?
Is that Elmwood also?
No.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? I have two, and one of them, um, Amy is, is it possible to have a very short descriptor under each one of them, just for purposes of transparency and anybody listening that I can read through so people kind of know what, doesn't have to be more than a line or two, but just to kind of distinguish what we're doing. And um, on the, you know, we had the conversation when we were applying for funding from Congressman Price's money about um, the letting copper rule related to the water meters, which was kind of exciting and, you know, to think about the prospect of applying for funding to, to upgrade our water meters. But this is, this pot of money is not conducive to that?
There is funding for studies that is much easier to obtain. They try to run all studies, whether it's the A I A or merger, regionalization. Letting copper would be one of the studies that they have said they will fund. And we're under a deadline by December twenty twenty-six to identify every service that is let or operate our system. So this was the study to identify those locations. There is funding for meters, but it typically is something that you have to have a project that is doing upgrades to the water system in that area. And then you can add meters as part of that water project.
Okay.
So yeah, doing standalone meters is not as common as trying to do it as part of the project.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving on, new business. We have consider amending the City of Oxford Take Home Vehicle Policy. And you have that information uh, under um, six A, attachment six A. And that is, was a subject of quite a bit of discussion in our Public Safety and Personnel Committee meeting. And the recommended change is from twenty miles radius for police department personnel up to forty miles from the city limits of the City of Oxford. And any questions?
I'm going through it all at the moment, that did include department heads, right?
This one is for police department personnel only?
Just the police department. Can we talk about department heads having the same? I'd like to.
Essentially, it's your policy, you're the policymaking body, and you can do what you wish. But uh, coming from the committee meeting, the joint committee meeting, it is just do that one for now and we'll revisit later.
Yeah.
But.
At some time in the future, near future, I'd like to extend that to department heads as well.
Yes, Commissioner Gilry.
Well, when I, when I read it, I thought to myself, how many vehicles do we really have that are available for people to take home outside of, like the police patrol cars? I mean, what do we, what, what does the vehicle inventory look like for Oxford?
We'll put that together and put it in the agenda packet, send it out so you'll have it for next Tuesday.
Okay.
I can't empty you right off the top of my head.
We have that many. I mean, I never thought we had that many is what I was sitting there reading.
Too many, but um, we, we do have a few.
Oh wow.
We have some for the supervisors that take them home so that they can respond, especially in water and sewer and things like street department, things like that. So I'm not sure exactly of the number and want to be sure if we're going to provide the information that we provided completely and totally.
Which brings back a great question, because as I was reading through this policy, and it's amazing how forgetful I can be. I can make a comment about anybody else's memory. Uh, but it, I see in the policy, I'm going to assume it was always there, that the city manager will provide a summary report on take home vehicle use annually to the city board during the budget development process. And I'm not sure that's anything that I've heard a report on since we established the, the last policy. So I guess, I think that would be kind of interesting.
That would be a good time, right?
Yeah. You know, I hate to ask you to do anything, because I know your plate is very full.
That's okay.
But that would be interesting information, I think.
Right, sixteen followers.
Six, oh, it says um, in the.
Current positions authorized to take home vehicle applies to the following departments.
Right. So it says, but it doesn't say the number current positions authorized. Right. And you say it also says how many cars there are?
Well, I just said it was just sixteen here, and it's the.
Oh, right. It doesn't say how many patrol officers.
And that's what invoked my question, I said, okay, a lot of positions listed, but I guarantee it's not that many cars available.
Right.
Well.
Well, I think, I think for the department heads that are already on the list, they're already taken care of. So the question would be how many people patrol officers and so on have access to a car at the police department? Great. Any other questions on this item? Okay, good, thank you.
Sorry, I have one.
Yes, sir.
Why is um, one of the items highlighted in the yellow? Is that like there's something new or added?
No, the only thing that's being considered to be added is the red. I apologize for that, that was there previously.
Like just to make sure.
Yeah, just, just the red is the only thing that's being requested to be added.
Okay. Good. Do we, um, is it a clear thing going through this, because I think we had this with talks about all the appropriate behavior and everything. Is there a rule that when an off, when anybody is in a take home car, they are not to be doing personal bit? It says you can't carry somebody else in the vehicle, but it's also that you're not to be doing personal business. It's, it, that bullet is in there?
It's, it's not bulleted, it's under purpose, vehicles are not to be used for personal purposes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, super, then we move on to consider accepting the North Carolina Urban Forest Council Legacy Tree Fund Fund Grant. Uh, which is great news. And congratulations to the manager and I guess Alyssa for uh, putting that together. And so does anybody have, your support information is under six B. And it'll be included more of the narrative when we get the agenda for next week. Um, does anybody have any questions on this right now?
Some of the, some of the language in that talked about repaying something. And, and somewhere I got lost in, 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 in that word. And if it was a grant, I, I, I thought it would not be a repayment something.
I saw that. I think that's just, it's a pickable, this is a grant, am I correct, Mr. Main?
Oh, reimbursements, do you think it's reimbursement meaning to us?
Yeah, well, yeah, it says payment method, reimbursements pay on a five month basis.
That, because it's a reimbursement grant, that we spend the money and then we give them the receipts.
Send them the invoice and they reimburse us.
Oh, so it's really free money, but it's just.
Okay, you just got to show the receipt first.
Okay.
Right?
That is correct.
Okay. Uh, any further questions? Under the timeline, because the grant says there's some work on the vaults. And I was just wondering, um, do we have time for that? What, how hard is that work?
We're having those conversations internally right now about um, the vaults themselves and uh, some of the, the work to be done. I can't say at this time, but um, we may, there, there may be a possibility of requesting an extension in the grant funds. Uh, depending upon the work that we really want to perform. Um, I can, and I hate to say this, at this point in time, but I can envision us potentially spending a bit more than five thousand dollars on this project in order to make this project as transformative as we really want it to be. You know, but I'm not talking about just purchasing new trees and taking out the old ones and chunking new ones in the ground. We would like to see the, the tree vaults rehabilitated, if not transformed into something much more attractive than what we have now, which kind of willy nilly cut the size. I don't, I'm not going to cast dispersion on how that got there. But um, I think this is an opportunity to kind of right that wrong, so to speak, and make it really look like, you know, something very attractive, uh, because you've got an opportunity to do it. So we are working internally to um, come up with what we would recommend. That it look like and present you the visuals and provide that to the information to the public once we've had some initial conversations here about going forward. And if you like, um, what we're going to present to you and then moving forward, once we identify what that would take, what the work is involved in it, as well as, you know, the acquisition of the trees. I don't believe that, all of you have seen, there's a, a list of trees, or species of trees, um, potentially for utilization in urban areas. Um, we had an arborist come in back in the late winter, I believe, like March, something like that. And actually looked at it and put together something for us. Uh, so we'll be providing that information as well. But um, you know, some of the species, we, we don't necessarily completely agree with the arborists because some of them simply are going to grow too tall.
Yeah.
And that's the whole point, we don't want trees to grow up into the power lines and then be cut and look just.
Don't even go there.
You catch my drift, you see some of them around town and how they look. Um, so we're looking for something that is more of a, you know, species of dwarf trees that will survive in an urban environment, once they're stuck in the vault. You know, they're, they're pretty much covered up by an impervious surface. So, you know, they've got to be geared towards thriving in that environment. So that's what we want, as well as considering the aesthetics and all of the above. As well as not having a single species of tree, because if you have a single species of tree, um, they're subject to blight or a disease or something that could wipe them all out at one time. So you're looking at something that, you know, creates some attractive visuals that can provide some either blooms or foliage in different seasons, growing to the right size, all of those things. So um, that's what we're looking at right now. So in order to accomplish all that and get everything done, we may come back and ask for a little bit more money, which potentially can, you know, our funds potentially uh, can be utilized for that. Um, but we're trying to get all that together. But in, in doing that process, part of that process is for you to accept the offer of the grant funds. And I'm sure they'll work with us, that, that's their intent, is to utilize that money for these type of purposes, public purposes. And this is a very good one.
Excellent, thank you so much. Any questions, more questions? Thank you so much. We'll go back, find out where we are. Uh, and then, so we're at the end of the agenda, consent agenda. We have uh, reminders, which of course, right now are for hot sauce by this time next week. You know, Alyssa and all our other very hardworking staff people will be grateful. I just want to thank you now in advance for the phenomenal amount of work that I know has been invested in this process. People are really excited, I'm sure it's going to be outstanding. And just thank you, everybody that's, that's worked hard to make this happen. And, and I would also say, uh, Amy, I know there's been a lot, a lot going on. People are talking about everything that's happening underground and overground. So thank you too for your part there. And we, we appreciate it.
We're working hard to have those two peacefully coexist. That's been a challenge.
Oh, sure.
Sure it has been, but.
It's been worrying at times.
But thank you for your hard work on that. And uh, Cindy, I would like to ask, even though technically it's, you save it till September, Culture Fest is going to be October first, so by the time we have our agenda meeting, I don't think we will have had, Culture Festival will be gone. So can we include that on the calendar, the little reminders?
Yes, ma'am.
Please. Okay. Uh, and with that, Commissioner Conde, anything you would like to add?
Uh, just echoing sentiments about the preparation for Hot Sauce Festival, I know it's been a lot of work. Uh, so thank you to everyone who's been involved in pulling this off. It's a great um, testament to your hard work and it shows off our town and none of it is possible without you guys. So all credit to you guys on, for that. One question regards, I unfortunately wasn't here for the last meeting because I was out with COVID, but uh, wanted to touch on um, the Parking Lot Authority and see if we've had any communications with the Parking Lot Authority. Um, potentially appointing a member of staff uh, to be liaison to that committee just so we have uh, some line of sight and we can maybe coordinate hopefully getting some much needed paving done in some of those areas that they're responsible for.
I do believe that our Public Works Director is now our liaison for the city. And he can speak to that if he wishes to.
Yeah, I thought I was saying work, because didn't you get it to Cindy if she was out?
Okay. Awesome. Yeah. Um, aside from that, I believe that is it for me this evening.
Okay, excellent, Commissioner Gilry.
Um, just wanted to follow up with um, a tour of the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah.
And was wondering.
And was wondering, I mean, has it been scheduled or, or what has happened or is there a holdup or something?
Between Amy being out, me being out, it just hasn't happened. I was out for two weeks straight, so.
And I was trying to blame Alan.
No, it's not Alan's fault, believe it.
Everything else is, so it doesn't matter. I'm good.
Okay.
It's fine. I'll get with Amy tomorrow.
Okay.
See what we can do.
All right. And I have a request from a student from Falls Lake as part of their senior projects. And how do we proceed with providing the students with that type of information? They want to come and present some, well, they're asking a question actually, and I was just wondering, how do we handle those things? She's wanting to submit a proposal of providing, um, an acoustic piano for public use, um, and that she will maintain it and this, that, and the other, but she's reaching out to the Oxford community and hopes and guidance and advice or information on the location that she can house the piano. However you, however if you think that the Oxford area for the piano does not work with the criteria of my project, do you have any recommendations on the city facility or community or area you think that it will be more suitable? So how do we normally proceed with something like that?
So I sent Tina, uh, so I, that was exactly the same request that I got and I sent Tina an email that said. Excuse me?
You received this one too?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well then, no point of me ask continuously asking that question. Okay, we're good.
No, I just said you want a piano in the, I mean, I'd love to see a piano outside downtown, but I'm not thinking that they're thinking this, because you cannot keep it, an outside piano.
That was what my question was going to be to her when I saw her again.
But, so if there's, if it's to have one inside, I was just wondering if Tina wanted one over at the gym. And you might say, God, no. Which you're entitled to say.
Or I might not say anything.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
There might be some opportunity with DOE DC too, potentially. So there might be some potential with DOE DC as another, uh, potential option.
Okay, let's have that conversation. Because I know somebody else who wants to get rid of one.
True. Okay. So, so how shall we respond to this, this student?
Well, I can keep resp, I can respond back after whatever I hear and I'll talk to Brian and then we'll keep going.
So we don't need to hear more from the student to find out exactly what she's really planning? Because I had a lot of questions, but I'm, I, I hadn't had a chance to talk to her again about it.
I would say definitely ask the questions.
Okay. I think it would be pretty cool to invite her in to, to present what she wants us to hear about. I mean, but I don't want to hurt her feelings if we say vote and say no. I mean, you know, so how do we handle that?
Research where we can potentially place one. Before we have somebody come up here and even take up their time and be, be of the, uh, belief that they might be able to do that.
Yeah.
If it were appropriate. I, I know that Goldsboro has one downtown.
They do, it's outside.
Whether or not they still do, I don't know. You know, it's been a while since they had the Main Street, uh,
Right.
Conference there, but they had one downtown.
They do. And it says play like nobody's watching on it. They let some people paint it. It looks awesome. It's, it's, uh, you know, I mean, I know somebody who would love to get some kids and, and, uh, help them paint a piano for an outdoor thing, but I think it really depends on whether or not they want a piano to be outdoors or not.
We do have an upcoming, uh, Park and Rec Committee meeting. Would it be appropriate to invite her to that? If it's a very brief, uh, presentation? So I know we're, we're doing our meeting just before the regular board meeting, but is a way for her to articulate her project?
I think it's more appropriate to clear whether the Parks and Rec Director, but I think she needs to be allowed to ponder.
I mean, I just got the email.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Great. Anything else? No, ma'am, thank you.
That's me.
Commissioner Toby?
I want to reiterate what Commissioner Combs said about the hot sauce and all the hard work that's gone into it. Um, I think it's going to be a fantastic day. I'll be there as much as I can. I've got to apologize about the planning committee meeting. I was actually in the emergency room when that was due to take place, so I apologize for that. And I will do my best to get that meeting going as soon as possible because I think it's important that we get this document before the full board. But if there's nothing else, I just, uh, look forward to a good weekend, really.
And, and speedy healing for you.
Sorry?
And speedy healing for you.
Oh, six months, they said. Six months. But we'll, you know, we'll go what they say.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yeah, um, I was, um, really concerned when I found out that, uh, Police Department lost another officer, seems like a few days after we had just had a public safety and personnel meeting. I don't know, two, three days later, I got the message or found out that we had lost another officer. And, you know, I'm certainly happy to see the shift in the, um, take home policy. I think that that would be helpful. But I'm trying to figure out in my head what's going to stop the bleeding relative to our police department. And it just sounds to me like we just have to be competitive with our surrounding municipalities relative to salary. Otherwise, we're going to just have a repeat of this every once in a while. So I, I, I just think it's important to address that issue. We may have to pay what our neighboring municipalities pay. I mean, I, I can't think of any other way we can stop our officers from going to Creedmore, Butler, Vance, wherever else they end up going. So, I mean, I, I just think we, we have to be realistic about this. If we're not competitive with our neighboring municipalities, we're going to keep losing officers. And if somebody has another idea about that, I'm, I'm interested in hearing.
Do we know that that was the, the factor in this particular case?
I mean, I don't know. Well, he went to a, a local, another local police department, right?
Orangeville.
Oh, okay.
If I had any money.
So was it purely the salary itself or was it a signing bonus or? Oh, wow. Okay. Okay. Well, this, this weekend I had the, the pleasure of, of visiting another bigger community and stuff. And on one of their bulletins, they had, this was on Prince George County, Maryland, one of the, one of the higher paid, you know, economic cities around here, anyway. And this, and I was surprised that the starting salaries of their police officers in that county was fifty-eight thousand dollars. And then that, and that sort of surprised me. I would have thought theirs would be so much higher than that. And, um, and I, and I took a picture of it just, just, and, and so I'm not understanding, you know, this, this salary thing in a sense. I understand the want of, um, thinking that you've, well, the, the salary itself, but when you look at communities that have far more resources than, than we ever can imagine, you know, I'm like, wow, you know, how do you balance that and what do you do with that? So I was, I was, I was surprised that it was so low there. And it made me think and, and look and ponder some stuff, anyway. So, like, wow.
It's a dilemma. I mean, you know, one of the things with increasing to forty miles out is that somebody who lives on the other side of the Belt Line in Raleigh can come to work here, get trained up by us, and, and we'll pay for their gas to come to work and their vehicle, and then go to Morrisville. And it's, it's, it's a dilemma. You know, we, we, I totally want us to support our officers, but, but that is a little bit like, whoa, that, you know, when you think about going to the other side of Raleigh, I sure hope, if, if we do, that we won't see that revolving door continue.
Well, just to conclude, I'm speaking more specifically of our surrounding municipalities. Uh, Creedmore, Butler, Warren, Vance should not pay more money than we pay. And I think that will help. I mean, unless, please keep, you know, can you?
Commissioner Bridges, we have, in the last year, we've gone and launched one officer to Henderson Police Department. And we've called multiple officers to Grand County Sheriff's Department. The majority of them have since left and went to larger agencies or larger agencies within Wake County. This is sizable. It's, it's sizable. It's, um, we're bringing officers in now. We're training them. We're providing the training that makes them attractive to other agencies where they can go and receive a ten thousand dollar pay increase. This is, there's not an answer to this. I think this is the beginning of just the era of law enforcement to come. Oxford is, we've got to be competitive. We're going to have to raise salaries. And one of the issues now with my officers, I just now learned as of last Thursday, I have another officer that's probably going to be leaving to a larger agency. And all I hear is we got a four percent cola and they appreciate what they've gotten. They appreciate the bonus. But when you have a four percent cola increase and inflation's almost at ten percent, there's no balance today. These officers are having to work two jobs, they're tired, they're exhausted. Um, it's all they can do to, to basically take care of their families. They come to, I had one come to work and he said, I don't know if I'm going to have lights when I come home this afternoon. I've had officers, I asked, are you not having lunch today? No, I can't afford to eat. I, I pull money out of my pocket because I'm not going to let officers do without, not what it comes to do. And, you know, we do everything and we, we try to keep them, the morale up and we try to encourage them. But, you know, there comes a point in time where you cannot continue to say, oh, no, give us time, just wait for this little bit. We've been saying that for a while now and they're not seeing that light at the end of the tunnel. So what are you doing? But we're, again, I say Oxford is not in this boat alone. I was in Delaware this weekend. I have a chief that has recently retired within the last two years. I have another friend up there that has, um, recently became a police chief. I had very serious conversation with them this weekend and they're going to do the same thing. And we all had that conversation. What is the solution? There is not a solution that is an immediate fix or just not one thing that's going to correct this issue. This is a nationwide issue. The biggest thing is we have got to provide to our citizens what we want Oxford to be and how safe we want our community to be, regardless of what Creedmore is doing, what Henderson is doing, what Morrisville, Raleigh, Durham, anywhere else, what we want Oxford to be, how safe do we want our community to be? Do we want to pay all of our employees and actually get out here every single day in the streets in one way or another and take care of the city and provide the safe environment and a beautiful environment for our citizens? What, what, how do we want Oxford to be perceived? But as far as a, an instant solution, I just don't think there is one. We just keep chipping away every single day, every day. Sheriff's Department is currently now so short and they have five that are preparing to leave. Um, I think they've all accepted conditional offers. They're in the same position wherein we have been bending over backwards for the last, well, two weeks since schools are done. We are trying to assist them and do what we can with, um, just making sure the children get to school, making sure that the crosswalks are covered, making sure that the bus routes are safe for these children. We've been working hand in hand and it, it just seems like every day it's, it's more and more that we're having to do. But, you know, we'll do whatever we need to do for our children, certainly.
Well, we're growing. There's developments everywhere.
Yes.
And I don't know how we think if we are short of officers now that we're going to have safe developments that are growing up around us. So we have got to figure out a strategy to hold on to our officers. I mean, otherwise we're not going to have safe neighborhood. Yes.
Now, I just want to say something to what you were saying, Commissioner Bridges. You're absolutely right. Because we can be full staff, but if your full staff of law enforcement officers have less than two years' experience.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right.
You understand where I'm going with that. Certainly now, um, we have to have good, strong supervisors who are knowledgeable of constitutional laws and the laws of this state and our city ordinances to be able to direct and guide these young officers that we're going to have and we're going to continue to have. But within the next three years, Oxford Police Department is going to lose about a hundred and seventy-five years worth of experience because it's going to be retired.
Yeah.
Um, and when we do that, we're going to be left with three officers that have fifteen, even fifteen, eighteen years. Everybody else is going to be maybe three or four that have five to eight years. Everybody else is going to be less than two years' experience.
Wow.
It's going to be, it's going to be a hard haul to manage. It's going to be very hard to manage. That, of course, is, we're going to see that in the community. I have a terrible, terrible feeling that our crime stats are going to start going up. Um, right now more than three ownership and sometimes that is simply not enough. We had a shooting yesterday that was a result of a fight that started at JF Live, um, last Friday night at a football game. And right now, in, in my reasoning, I am actually thinking about cutting some of the service that we provide to the community. Or either trying to implement some type of software program where if it's, someone stole a rocking chair off your front porch, you can go online and actually fill out your own report in just a minute. The police department, if there is an officer up thirty, forty-five minutes from the, from the time they respond to the call, take the information back into their computer.
Okay. We know we need to have this conversation. Continue this conversation. Mayor Proton?
I mean, ah. Commissioner Bridges, um, fell right into my, my category of questioning. Considering the, the last events that have taken, taken, transpired prior to yesterday, I didn't know about yesterday. And there was a lot of chatter about the incident on one fifty-eight, um, on Roxbury Highway. How do I work this? I'm worried about our police force. And the chatter online about that incident. And I know we've got a lot of young officers and I know our senior officers are being overworked and they're tired. I know we, as you said, we don't, we don't have a magic cure. But whatever we got to do, we got to be, we've got to do it. We've got to do it and do it as soon as possible, regardless of what people around us are doing. We've got to do what's best for us because if, heaven forbid, something happened and the city's held liable because we did not have enough
That's not me.
police protection.
Yeah.
You know, so we've got to, if we need another personnel and, and, um, you and I, our committees meet again and, and brainstorm, but we've got to do something. And I would rather us be prepared to do something and have it done than to sit, sit here and say we should have, would have, could have. And I know in the nation, there're not a lot of young people wanting to go into police. And I know in the nation, there are not a lot of young people wanting to go into policing via. You hear it every day over the media, but there, if we can do something to hold what we got...
That's my concern.
And train what we got and educate, what, you know, and I don't know what it's going to take to hold what we got. We've got to do it. I think that was it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioner Bullitt?
Two things. One, just remind everyone of the invitation to join us Monday, the Human Relations Commission. So I extend that invitation on behalf of them to join.
And that's at 7:00 PM at the Expo Center? Okay.
And just sucker this to tonight. Are we back to normal dress or we still summer dress?
I don't know. It feels kind of summery. I mean, that's my personal, I'm, I'm kind of a, you know, I veer towards...
I'm happy with that, but I just asked.
But it's y'all's, I don't need to speak up. I apologize. What do y'all want to do?
Window summer one month.
One more month for summer?
One month, we can wear t-shirts, polos.
Okay.
And then I told her to go jackets.
You go to jackets.
Okay, Robert.
And it is my intention to be there next Monday. I need to go to the Board of Education and do a presentation there first. And I've told them that I need to be at the Expo Center by seven, but if I'm late, that would be why.
I intend to be there.
Okay, great. Commissioner Lumpkins, and you had your hand raised earlier and I apologize. I was supposed to...
And I do too.
So, please forgive me.
I was leaning back because everybody saw me. So going back to the police issue, when we had our public safety meeting, I was under the impression when we left that we were supposed to be getting some report. I think we, I thought I didn't make that up, but I thought Alan was going to meet with the department heads and come back to us with some options.
That'll be a part of your packet for next week.
Okay. So I was just kind of looking forward to seeing that.
So to look at that information first before we go forward with any further discussion?
No, not necessarily that. Just I was, I was making sure that that was actually going to happen. But I didn't know if I misremembered something.
Nope. It'll be part of your regular meeting packet.
Okay, excellent.
Just have a question.
Yes, sir.
The municipality where all the police officers quit, did we try to recruit any of them?
That's funny, but the chief of police and I had that conversation the day after they quit, so.
But what I can say is we don't want any of them.
They're a little far away.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
We don't need somebody else.
They're a little far away.
Locals to us to have departments that close.
Okay.
No line. Police department closed last week.
No line.
Oh, so you're going to kind of do a little outreach?
No.
Thank you.
Okay. Important to keep your eye on the goal.
We're definitely desperate enough.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good answer.
Okay, excellent. I appreciate that suggestion, Commissioner. Um...
Was he through?
Yes. Are you through?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't think I have anything else to add. I'm enjoying the discussion. Thanks for hot sauce. On to city manager.
Just quickly, of course, we're very, very busy getting ready for hot sauce. Getting blessed out every day by folks that don't like their vendor spots and this, that, and the other. We'll be glad when it's done. I think the weather forecast for now is like 82 and partly cloudy, so we're holding out hope that that will be the case. And the only other thing that I have to add is there may likely be a closed session scheduled for the September agenda. I've had some conversation with a few of the targeted land opportunities and wish to convey that to this board.
Excellent. Excellent. Okay. Mr. Burnett?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Well, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
I think that was Commissioner Gilry. Thank you very much. All of y'all be safe and sound. Enjoy the better weather and we'll see you out there on Saturday.
Okay.
What's going on?
I ruptured the engine.
Okay.
We understand.
I remember, I grew up.
I've been running back to...
Six months before.
So I remember the first ever hot sauce.
Thank you.
As of reading.
Yeah.
It's possible.
Two, seven.
Then there you go.
Right.
You know, as you said.
Yeah, we were down at, we were at Forest Hills Pool.
Yeah.
We were all together.
Nothing.
I'm not here to be a knucklehead.
I knew she had one, but I didn't know she didn't have, you know.
Yep.
I was in high school.
Did you?
Well, there's Walmart right now.
He's getting scared. You go outside, it's a parking lot.
He said, no. He said, no.
Day 24, I didn't see a DJ.
I'm going to lower it. He had, we got this. We were trying to make sure, you know, I check on this and we got this, we got this. When you come, he's shaking.
Sir, Alan, you're running.
Not just because...
Too bad, I'm running. You have to tackle them.